Hey Mike, it's nice for you to join us. He is with District Four and City Council. And I was like, you know what? We'd be on my YouTube channel. And he agreed.
I did.
So I told him, yeah, I told him I'd be in my best behavior. No curse words and no crazy questions. But I am really excited to have Mike here because he is in, he was prior military like my husband. And my hubby flew the Strike Eagle. And he kept my husband alive on the Strike Eagle by maintaining it. Cause we all know pilots.
They'd be fine without us.
No, as a wife, we're really grateful for him. But yeah, so our kiddos go to school together at Dexter, which is cool. And you've been in Wichita Falls for how long now?
Almost 15 years.
Yeah, okay. So this really intrigues me because as a military spouse, so we've been here four or five years. Something that's been really interesting to me because my husband went from active duty here to, you know, to the reserve unit now. So it's like we're part civilian, part reserve. You know, where do we end up and live? And me being in real estate, I'm always helping families PCS here and PCS out. But often I really don't have that many families that I have staying. But I also still have a lot of families around here where I live, by the stadium area that have retired here. I just haven't met a lot of them. So I kind of wanted to get your perspective being a retired military member. You know, why did you choose Wichita Falls to call home? And then, you know, get into kind of like the political sector, which, you know, for not being born and raised here, that's hard. That's some hard work right there.
So I'll give you the whole, so I didn't retire. I separated after eight and a half years on active duty.
Okay.
So the story is I grew up in Connecticut. So for the first almost 19 years of my life was in Connecticut. And then in 2005, my dad was alive. What are you gonna do with your life?
I don't know.
Probably join the military. He's like, yes. So I went to the recruiter, it was probably the easiest cell ever. I just walked in. He's like, oh, let me show you this. I'm like, just show me the paper. When can I go? He said, three weeks. Okay. Signed on the dotted line and they little delayed enlistment. And then I enlisted in March 2005. So the first, the first four and a half years, so from 2005 until 2009, predominantly was at RAF Lakeview, United Kingdom, which you were very familiar with.
My favorite base.
I grew the lovely F-15 Strike Eagle. Really, really enjoyed my time there. Went all over Europe, a little bit of Asia. And then 2009, I said, you know, I want to come back to Shepherd Air Force Base and I want to teach, always wanted to teach. So applied for that, came here in 2009, bought this house, not that far from where we're at right now in Cypress. And for the next four years, I taught. I taught F-15 crew chiefs and really got to help shape the future crew chiefs for the United States Air Force. In 2013, I kind of was at this crossroads. So I had met Crystal, Crystal's from Burke. She said, well, I don't know. I mean, if you leave, you know, maybe, maybe it'll work out. Maybe you won't. I'm like, ah, man, I really want this to work out. So I had a wonderful mentor. His name was Daryl. And I talked to him and I said, man, I don't know what to do. And he goes, well, you've finished your degree and you have a lot of your qualifications. What about becoming civil service? I don't even know what words you just mentioned. So 2013, separated from active duty, became a civil servant, bought my military time back and then just pressed on with my career. So for the past almost 19 years, served at the Department of the Air Force, both active duty and civil service. But I mean, ultimately you want to know why Wichita Falls? Well, like I said, a lot of time in Europe, a lot of time in Asia. And then in the past about 12 years, I've been a competitive strongman and power lifter. And I've been competing all over the country from east coast to west coast. So I've seen a lot of the country and I love, love, love the US. However, okay, like I said, traveled a lot. I always want to come back to Wichita Falls. And there are just, it's hard to pinpoint the one reason that I want to come back. A big one's traffic, okay? For sure. When I, I have friends at, so a lot of my friends in DC and friends in Florida and friends in California, just don't even believe my stories about, I've never hit more than five minutes of traffic.
Yeah.
Ever in almost 15 years. I've, you know, had to drive a little slowly during the winter on ice. But, but really that's, I mean, that, that's quality of life. But I really think that's what it comes back to. Okay, so you're a Realtor?
Yep.
So you can, you can come here as a military member and you can get, you know, you can get a really nice house for a very reasonable price. That's within that basic allowance for housing. And that is just very hard in a lot of parts of the country. So we've built up a lot around where we're at right now. Over by the stadium, so the southwest part of the city, which is what I represent on City Council. So that element of the quality of life is excellent. I enjoy the lack of traffic, like I mentioned. I don't, I don't mind the heat. A lot of people are like, I actually have found that there are a sufficient number of things to do. And if there's something, if there happens to be something that I, that I can't do in Wichita Falls, it's really easy to go to Dallas to do that, that thing that I need to do. But most of the things we enjoy doing are right here. So we, we enjoy going to the theater. So we go to the Wichita Theater, we go to the Backwood Theater. We can go to the orchestra. We can take the kids to places like Crash Works. We enjoy, you know, being able to leave the house, drop Ella off at Dexter and then press onto the base and do that all in 20 minutes?
Yeah.
How many other cities in the US can you do that in?
No, it's interesting you mentioned traffic as one of your favorite things because I was chatting with a client who found me off of YouTube and just today. And they were from Idaho. And I was like, I have to know, like, why Wichita Falls? Like, why are you not choosing Dallas? Cause they said they're like big sports fans. They love to come here for the Dallas game. And I'm like, but why not? And they're like, we hate traffic. And I was like, solid, well, we have none. You know, they're like, that's, you know, we found your channel and you were always talking about like, it's easy to commute around Wichita Falls. Like we're what I call like a little big town.
Absolutely.
We do sort of have everything, although if you could pull a Costco, that's pretty much what this interview scores for.
I love, I love Costco. I love Sam's Club, okay? I've been a Sam's Club member for a long time. But when you go to a Costco.
It's an experience.
There's something, there's something about Costco, I kind of put, I mean, Costco, Buc-Ee's. You just certain places.
We do need a Buc-Ee's.
They just do, they do so many things well that you're like, why? So I'm gonna go with a line that Ron Kitchens, the Chamber of Commerce CEO says, which is why not us? And when people bring up something aspirational, I really, I go why not us? And I want to, I want to touch on one more of the quality of life pieces. I love food, okay? I love food. And we have a tremendous amount of food options. My favorite place is Progress and Provisions.
I love them.
I love Progress and Provisions.
Their Brussels sprouts are on point.
They are, absolutely.
Even my kids like them.
I used to call them demon sprouts. And once I had good Brussels sprouts, I'm like, these are fantastic. I don't know, I was missing out. But burgers, okay? We have some solid burgers in Wichita Falls. So mine, so Ronnie's.
I was gonna say, do you like Ronnie's burger with the pickles? You can, from the jar, that massive jar.
The, but with Ronnie's, you can, there's some pretzel bun, okay? So you got Ronnie's pretzel bun. And then you've got Jean's reopened. So Jean's is fantastic.
I haven't been there yet.
It's good, it's good. Oh yeah, you gotta go. And then Pat's, I mean, those are, those are my top three. So if you just rotate, you just wanted burgers. But then if you're on stage, you can go to McBride's. If you want a variety of different, you go to Progress and Provisions.
I do like Pelicans for their filet. And I love their tuna, their seared tuna appetizer. Have you had it?
I, Crystal has. I probably tried to buy it, but Crystal, yeah, she loves it.
That's, I like seafood.
Cheesecake, okay? So the cheesecake at, at Pelicans, I feel like Amanda. I feel like Amanda makes the cheesecake. But homemade cheesecake, so if I go somewhere and they listen, I'm like, what's your dessert? What's your dessert? Cheesecake. Is it made here? I, if, I thought, see the waffling, like they're like, I don't know. I'm like, please check. And if they find out, they're like, it's made here. I'm like, please.
I'll have some of that.
But yeah, there's just, and then you, I feel safe. So there aren't parts of the city where I'm worried about, you know, walking through it at night with the, with the kids. You know, it's getting dark early right now, but I'm not, I'm not concerned about it. Cause our, our police do a wonderful job policing our city, keep me safe. And yeah, I mean, all of that, the totality of that, it just, it makes me want to come back, come back to Wichita Falls. Every single time. I mean, I drive, I come back over the flyover. So if I'm, if I end up flying out of Dallas or depending on where I'm flying out of, and I come over the flyover coming home and I look out and I'm like, I'm home? And I, and I've been doing that the past 15 years. And I have no, I don't want to change that. Like I love that. And I want to see, go back to Ron Kitchens again. I talk about Ron a lot. The cranes are exciting. I want to see, I want to drive over the flyover and I want to see cranes.
I think that's awesome. I love that for you because as a military family, I'm super guilty. I still, so Matt and I have PCS almost seven times over the 15 years that we've been together and.
For two years.
Yeah. I, I like still, I don't even know what home is anymore because I haven't lived anywhere long enough still. And so me and my husband still, you know, toy around with the fact like, where are we going to end up? And why would we end up there? And, you know, so it's always, I always like to meet people who have pulled the trigger and been like, nah, this is where we're staying. Cause me and my husband just don't, we, we like honestly just don't know when people ask us. We're like, we have no idea. Like what are we doing with our lives? We don't know. We don't know what we want to do when we grow up. You know, we've got two kids and they're at Dexter. They, you know, go to school with your kiddos and we still just don't, we have no idea what we want to call home. My husband grew up in the woodlands, so he grew up in Texas. But I grew up in Florida. I grew up in Pensacola Beach, Florida. So I don't know, maybe we'll call this home forever. Maybe we won't, I have no idea. But I will say, lack of traffic is phenomenal. I do like Progress and Provisions. Progress and Provisions and also, oh, Pelicans.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are my top two. And I do eat at Fox Hill occasionally too.
Fox Hill, such a nice experience.
It's their dates. Have you had their?
I did, I did, yeah.
Bacon wrapped dates with goat cheese and what is that? The balsamic drizzle?
There's a balsamic, is it balsamic reduction? I don't know, I don't know.
It might be a reduction, I don't know.
I don't know. Crystal's much better with, I'm like, okay, so what is this? Okay.
I love it. So if, you know, all the military families that I help PCS here, you know, besides traffic and the food and you love Dexter, you know, what would you tell them to anticipate compared to other bases that you've lived in? For me, I try to pick the highlights because like I've been stationed at places like mid Oklahoma. We did not have Target or Starbucks. We didn't even get a Walmart until like the year before I moved there. Isn't that crazy? I would have shopped at Pidu Wiggly. So be grateful. We do have multiple Walmarts. We have Lowe's, Home Depot, like the big chain stores. So listen, the two things I'll advocate for in this video is Costco and Lululemon. Just Costco and Lululemon.
So Lululemon has a physical location? I've never been to a physical Lululemon location. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
You're into fitness and you've never been to Lululemon?
Fatlek's. I've been doing, I do, I like Fatlek's. The pants in Fatlek's, yeah.
Really? No, we mean Lululemon.
Sorry. All right, I'll try Lululemon now.
When you said you were into fitness, I'm like, this man, I could get Lululemon for us.
Yeah, sorry. I've never, now I'm gonna have to try it. I'm gonna try out Lululemon. I will, that'll be, I will, I will try now.
I'm always going to Dallas.
Okay.
Or my husband picks stuff up on his trips.
Okay, yeah, I'll try now. Yeah, next time I'm in Dallas, I will check out Lululemon.
This is very important. This is very important.
So here's what I, here's what, and perhaps this isn't a, you ever heard of BHAGs? They carry audacious goals. I mean, just something like crazy. And I don't even know that Costco is a true BHAG, okay? But I'm gonna go with a BHAG might be a Boeing or Boeing subsidiary.
Oh, having a Boeing here?
So having something, so or a Lockheed or a Raytheon. That may be a BHAG. But BHAG doesn't mean that it's impossible. It means it's aspirational. It's something to shoot for. It's something to be like, the why not us? Okay, but the, but you asked about what, what and why military members want to come here. So I already mentioned the housing, the traffic. We've got two new high schools, which are exciting. And I see a lot of, a lot of positive traction for, for the school district. And although it's not, you know, directly associated with, with City Council because there's a separate school board and superintendent. We're still, it's a partnership, right? So it's important for the success of Wichita Falls, that WFISD succeeds. So all that to say, what we can do better, especially, and I'm gonna go from the enlisted perspective because having watched officers, a smaller community, take care of one another, doing exceptional job in that, right? So pilot community, okay? Perhaps you go to another base and you're like, hey, I know this person's there. They can probably list all the things, the do's and do nots, right? They probably can share that with you. Within enlisted, it's not as baked into the culture to do that. I would love to see that. But when, when enlisted family sometimes comes to a new environment, I want to provide them with kind of like a, like a checklist or like a welcome package. Yeah, so that, hey, you're, you're moving to Wichita Falls and here's, here's what you may, you know, here are some school options. Here's where you could live. Here are some after school activities. Here's what you could do on the weekends. And here's what else has shaped my perspective. So for, for 2018 to 2021, I was a community support coordinator on base. So I worked directly for, well, it was called, at the time it was a vice wing commander. Now they're called deputy wing commanders. But working for the deputy and I worked in quality of life issues for every other families. That was my, that was my charge. And I would visit with a lot of military families. And a lot of it was, was during COVID. And I heard time and time again, you know, there were families that just didn't feel connected to the community. And they felt like it was a, it was a military friendly community, but sometimes they just didn't know how, how to welcome them in. And I, and I heard that, I heard that several times. And then I heard, and this, it would hurt my heart sometimes, but like, there's nothing to do here. And I would share these things that are here. And there are more that have come since then. And they were like, I had no idea. I've never heard of that. And sometimes the barrier is that information is shared via email on base. And the military member doesn't bring it back to their spouse, right? So yes, it happens, it happens.
Yes.
Other times, there's just not, maybe not as much of a social media presence for whatever that organization is. But there are, there are ways to pull them in. And we can do a better job as a community welcoming in, welcoming in military families. And you know, you're, what I see is very helpful with the role that you're in, advocating for, for military members as a Realtor is, okay, you know, the seven PCS struggle in 14 years, which, you know, enlisted members generally don't PCS quite as much. But there's still, there's still PCS a lot. I mean, in a 20 year career, I'm gonna ballpark it. An enlisted member, I'll PCSing five, six times. Officers may seven to 10. It, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
And I will say, so when we moved from England to here, I was still a stay at home mom. I stayed home for seven years to take care of my boys. And we moved on base, lived on Potteet Street. I loved that street. I love Potteet Street. We had the best neighbors. Obviously, we're all militaries, we're living on base. And I will say, when I lived there, I felt very disconnected from the community. So I was just like, you know, all the enlisted families too of where like, hey, we just don't know the resources. We don't know what's going on. I also felt that as well as all of my neighbors. And we all had done multiple PCSs, you know? We'd all lived in other countries and all around America. And our spouses had all been in for more than a decade each. A lot of them were closer to the retirement, you know, stages. But I will say, I even struggled when we moved from England to find things to do to, you know, really connect. Not honestly, until I became a real estate agent was I like, I gotta figure out what's going on in this town. So I connected with the Chamber of Commerce and Casey, who works there, who connects the spouses with jobs. So I'm huge on that. So something I do that I'm very passionate about is I'm very, very, very passionate about helping spouses have careers. So within my brokerage, I'm the national director for the military spouses in the military network. And I'm in that role because it is my passion to help serve all the spouses from the enlisted side to the officer side because military spouses have the highest level of education, yet we have the highest level of unemployment. And it is mind boggling to me. We truly do struggle to have careers, especially with like consistently moving. But I will say it's 2024. We're told not to even stay at a job for more than two years or we can't have pay increases. You know, the new, new way of doing business is, hey, if you want to continue to increase, you know, your pay or opportunities, you gotta kind of job hop more often. And as spouses, we've already been doing that. We have reinvented ourselves so many times. But I know a lot of us are so burnt out on that. But also, we also know that we aren't being hired because they're like, oh, well, where did you come from? How long will you be here? And those questions are actually not allowed.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure that you know that. So that's something, when I tried to re-enter the workforce, I had been home for seven years and I could not get a job to save my life.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
I think Cat, I think Gidget finally got me.
Gidget finally got him. But I find it interesting and I have heard this story. Was it a physician's assistant that the prior Chamber of Commerce president? I know he helped get a job for her because they were like, oh, well, we don't want to hire her because she's military.
I think you told me about this, yeah.
Yeah, and so he called up and was like, hey, what's your average time that a PA stays? Like, oh, 18 months. They're like, she's here for four years. You won't even give her a shot and she has more experience than the other applicants. So, you know, with you being in this position now and you being able to advocate for military, for me, obviously I'm passionate about helping the spouses. Do you think that there's anything now that we have a prior military member, you know, helping? And I know that there has to have been prior military, you know, service members that are somewhere in our city council. There has to be, I mean, we're a military town.
Sure, that definitely, that definitely happened.
But like from your perspective and Crystal, you guys are similar in age. Us, we have similar age kids. What do you think you could do to help, you know, spouses and careers here? Like where do you think we could advocate more or educate, you know, the community? Like we want jobs and a lot of us end up leaving. Like a lot of families will leave here because, you know, like how you found this home. But sometimes with the spouses, if we can't get a career, we're like, no, we want to move or we have job opportunities. So what can we do in Wichita Falls to help create that sense of community? Not only for the active duty member spouse, or active duty member, but also like for the spouse because we want something of our own. We don't want our identity only to be tied to our spouses. Like I want to be Jen as well. I don't want to just be mom. I don't want to just be wife. I want to be Jen and use my skill sets and my education.
So I think it's, and I'll go with, a lot of our issues are probably how we, kind of how we talk about ourselves and how we message ourselves, city, okay? And what's unfortunate is that sometimes the first things out of people's mouths when they talk about Wichita Falls are the city that hasn't grown in 60 years and the city that had been drowned, okay? So the way that we need to message our city is that we're a city that is primed for growth and that we are not only a military friendly community, but we're a military family friendly community, okay? So I see it, it's advocacy, it's marketing, okay? And I, I'm a connector, right? Like I love just, I mean, we probably, I don't know how many people we know just between, like, oh, I know this. But we, we need to continue to connect people. And finding, you know, whether it's through the chamber, whether it's through social media, whether it's through, you know, marketing on social media. I don't know the answer, but it's, but it's in there, right? It is possible because what, what happens is I met, I'm thinking about two specific people. So I met a military member. He came here, he came here about, about two years ago. And he came into our organization and I just really, I mean, I like to, I mean, because I'm a naturally curious person, I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to get to know him. So I said, hey, you get, you know, you're in processing, you get 20 minutes, just, there's the chair. You know, and I had a, an office right, like literally, you had to walk by my office when you came in the building. So he's walking out and he's like, you got time? I was like, absolutely. He sits down and we start talking and he said, yeah, my, you know, we got here and we moved from here. And, you know, my wife is, she's in education. She just doesn't even know where to start. You know, she doesn't think she can get into the school system, but you know, maybe, maybe something on base. But she has no, no idea where to start. And there was really no kind of one stop shop to help her navigate that. So, you know, we, we need to be able to show what the jobs, the areas of opportunity on base in the community. But we have to have that ready to go, hey, you're, you're a, you're a qualified nurse. You're qualified, you're qualified, you're a Realtor. You're in finance. Here's where you could potentially go. And we have job boards, but we've got to, we've, we talk about it, then you talk about it again, then you talk about it again. Because the, the lack of communication is what's gonna, it's what's gonna kill us. So we have to find a way to, to determine where, where those, where those gaps are. Cause that individual's spouse did eventually get hired on base. It is exceptional. And although they may only be here for a few years, that is a few years where they're massively impacting.
Kids.
They're massively impacting the community. And they're also, they're able to self-actualize and they're like, I'm so happy I'm doing what I want to be doing. Because unfortunately, sometimes military spouses get into the community and nothing against an entry level of a position, but they might be, you know, you might talk to them, you'd be like, you are very overqualified for this particular position. Why, why didn't you try this? They're like, I didn't know it existed. And then you find out they're like, well, we're leaving in three months. I wish I had known about this. This was there the entire time. So those are barriers to entry that are not, they're not insurmountable. But we have to, we have to figure out how to overcome them. And we get, we can do it together. I mean, it's through conversations like this. It's through what you're doing, advocating through your network. And it's just, it's one-on-one conversations like, oh my gosh, you're, you're able to do this? He's like, yeah, I'm licensed in this state and this state. And I, you know, and I'm sure you've seen it, but the licenses for military spouses, they've been doing a better job. And I guess, I think that's coming from Congress that we need to take care of military families because it's awful that, you know, we're what? We can go 20 miles and be in Oklahoma. But if a military spouse goes from Tinker to Shepherd Air Force Base and they're, they're licensed in their field, they're like, oh, I'm only licensed in this state. I can't actually practice in the state. But that impact, I mean, that financial impact could be tremendous in four years. But that impact, I mean, that financial impact could be tremendous in four years, if they're losing fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in four years.
Each year.
Each, yeah, that's, yeah.
And that's what's interesting is because whenever I'm trying to help families move here, it's like, okay, what do you do for a career? Will you be, you know, working when you come here? Because that's also going to affect the amount that you can spend on the house.
Yes.
Because are you single income or dual income? And that changes everything drastically.
Yes, it does.
I have been really thankful for Casey at the Chamber because she's often been able to help me get spouses' jobs, so we get a letter of intent to hire. And so therefore, they can use that as, as future income, and it goes towards the mortgage, which has been a huge lifesaver.
Yeah.
For so many spouses, especially, you know, the enlisted B A H here is eleven hundred, twelve hundred bucks a month, and when you're looking at interest rates, that's not getting you too much. That's getting you like a hundred and forty thousand dollar house, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, and that is few and far in between. Our prices have increased dramatically here. It's still affordable, but when I started real estate three years ago, I was able to get a lot more house for less, you know, and then, but we have inflation, you know, and inflation is going to happen everywhere. I am grateful that B A H rates went back up, because you remember last year, they went down, and I was like, what?
Yeah, like, how, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I wrote a letter. I wrote to Congress. I'm, I'm that person. I, I write.
We need that person, we do.
I'm not afraid. I was a social worker in my previous. What's something that you would like to share about that you feel would be educational for someone moving?
Golly.
Or even if someone wasn't military?
Yeah.
We can touch both bases. I'd say we have a little over ninety thousand in population now. We did decrease from last year.
One, one, one or two, right? I thought it was still over a hundred. No?
I just looked it up.
Really?
Their video, because I was comparing Burke Burnett to Wichita Falls, and Burke Burnett was like a little over eleven thousand, Wichita Falls was like in the ninety thousands.
Oh, I thought it was one or two. I thought the last tense was one or two. That's another I keep saying.
Maybe I looked at the wrong thing.
I think it's one or two.
Is it one or two?
Because it was one or four, I think it's one or two now. I think so. I think they'd be freaking out more if it was nineties. I think it's one or two.
Is it one or two?
I think it was one or two.
Okay, we could talk about that, about like, size of population.
Sure, no, yeah, absolutely.
Yearly income, not, or I think is it fifty-four thousand now? It was thirty-four thousand, but it, it's.
It's somewhere, I know it's somewhere around fifty.
Okay, so like, average family income?
Yeah.
I do know that like, overall cost, like, I want to talk about like, cost of living, like.
Yeah.
You know, hey, this compared to Dallas, what are, what is our comparison?
Yeah.
Because I feel like people like to, I mean, even today, the Idaho couple, I was like, why not Dallas?
Yeah.
And like affordability.
Yeah.
Traffic, affordability, more of a smaller town feel. What are we doing to, you know, connect military with the community? Like, are there events that happen?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we can get it.
We can talk about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I, things to do throughout the year, I mean, even just things that we do like regularly, like as a family, yeah, okay, yeah.
So, Mike, what are some fun things that you would say, sometimes people don't think about, but like, living day-to-day, you know, just living our lives? Because it's not like we're vacationing twenty-four seven, like, we all have lives, right? We all have jobs, we've got bills to pay, we're raising our families, you know? What do you and your family do, you know, on the usual that you would say is like fun and it's good to get out of the house and like entertainment? I know you said you really enjoy the theater, you guys enjoy the.
The orchestra, Crash Works.
Now, people who don't live here have no idea what Crash Works are.
So Crash Works is a, Crash Works is this, I would call like a steam, steam environment for kids, but it's a big, open space where kids can really have a steam environment where they can just, I mean, they can go in and just create, right? And that, giving them that ability, I mean, you just watch their, you just watch their mind. They're sponges, right? I, oh, gosh, I can't even imagine what it would be like if I had had that environment as a kid. But where else could you go that there's like a computer, you just can take that computer apart, and then you can go over here and you could do some world work? But, yeah, it's just, it's just a fun place.
Well, and that's located downtown.
It is.
Speaking of downtown, since people ask all the time.
Yes.
What is your downtown like? So, I like to be realistic.
Yes.
Our downtown is improving. So since I've been here in five years.
It is.
It has improved drastically. We now have, if you're into wine or beer, we do have a local, the Wichita Brewery, we have, what is the wine place called?
So we got several different wine places. So we have, I love O G Sellers, I love Hook and Ladder, and then, gosh, what is the other winery?
Hook and Ladder has really good appetizers.
Oh, no, Hook and Ladder.
The orders, whatever you want to call them.
Hook and Ladder is awesome, but I've started to appreciate wine more. And I really, I didn't know much about it. I really didn't. No, and then James at O G Sellers educated me quite a bit, and I still require more education. I definitely, very, very, very basic. However, you know, I bought one of those, it was, it was a wine called The Temptress that I, that I got right after. I said, I'm going to come back and get a bottle of this if I went, and I did. And I, I went and got the bottle, and I have just, just a little bit, it is, it is delicious. It's delightful. It is.
So, okay, so do you take Crystal on dates there?
So, I would say date night, so date night, Pelicans.
Yeah.
Fox Hill. Yeah, yeah, I would say those are probably our, our jams, especially, you know, you know, it becomes more, the more kids you have, the more challenging it becomes, like, there's so much, there's such a coordination piece.
There's so much, babysitting.
All right, so I've talked to my, you know, I keep up with my military friends, right? So, like I mentioned, almost nineteen years, both military and civilian, but I've got friends, I'd say my best friends are in North Carolina, Florida, Georgia, California, and then now in, more in Texas. But talking to all of them, the number of things that I am able to do in a given day because of the proximity of everything. So, in the morning, I can, you know, a few days a week, I mentioned that I roll, I roll jiu-jitsu at Red River Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. I love Red River, my Red River family, the Five Thirty Early Birds. So I'm able to leave my house at five fifteen, get to class at five thirty, roll for an hour, come home, get the kids ready, get either Ella to school or Liam to daycare on base, you know, do my, have my day, but, you know, people are like, how do you balance being able to, you know, serve on city council, serve on, serve on these boards? I'm like, well, I can, at lunch, it takes me less than fifteen minutes to get to City Hall, and it takes even less to get back to my office, because it's a little bit faster coming, coming back to base. But you're talking about twenty minutes of travel time to be able to, you know, do a meeting, a meeting at City Hall, if I need to do one. I mean, where, could, could you do that in Dallas?
I mean. We would need, we would need to pay for parking.
Yeah.
Because I just went there for a business meeting about a month ago, and I spent a hundred and twenty-five dollars in parking in one day. I was like, this better be a write-off, because this is ridiculous.
I'm trying to think. Do we pay for parking anywhere?
Yeah, I don't think we pay for it. I have never paid for parking anywhere here. I really hope we're not supposed to.
I don't, I don't think there are any, I've not seen a paid parking lot. Maybe, I don't even think for an event, but.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, so that, so able to, to do those things, and then the ability to just grab Liam, go to an event afterward, or grab Ella at after-school care. You just, being able to do that, like last night, we went to, we went to the Leadership Wichita Falls Classic, so I'll give a shout out to Leadership Wichita Falls specifically. So, if you're a military member, it is worth going through, just to see all of the nonprofits and what, what makes the city, what makes, makes the city so wonderful. So the nonprofits, it's really hard to capture how strong our nonprofit community is. So, Faith Mission, Helen Farby, CASA.
First Step.
First Step, The Women's Shelter, just all these organizations that sometimes people are like, well, I don't really know what they do. And in some instances, you wish you didn't need those services.
Yeah.
But you can't wish, you can't wish the, the need away. The need is there. So, I learned about all of those nonprofits going through Leadership Wichita Falls, and then I also learned about municipal government, and I was like, this is pretty cool. So Leadership Wichita Falls is what got me started on this.
Okay, I was like, so is that what pushed you?
It did. It's what, it's what started, it's what got the wheels turning. Yeah, it is. So I went through in twenty seventeen with Crystal. Now, somebody could correct me if they figure this out, but I think Crystal and I were the first couple to go through Leadership Wichita Falls, yeah. So went through, started serving on some boards, went back to school, and, you know, I wanted to, I always wanted to get my doctorate, so I got my doctorate in education, because I love, I love education. I love school. I spend a lot, I spend a lot of time. So.
That's fantastic.
Joined some boards, and then joined a couple city boards in twenty twenty-one. So I joined the Park Board, and I joined the Lake Wichita Revitalization Committee, which, again, I was able to get to really easily, you know, during the workday and get back to work. But going through, you know, we, we went through a Parker View process when I was on the Park Board with my teammate, Tom Taylor, we're now serving in the city council together, and we went to every single park in Wichita Falls. And what I did, and there were almost forty, depending on how you slice the numbers, there are somewhere between thirty-eight and forty. There's one, a couple of the parks are like, it's a park, but it's kind of like, it's a stretch of grass that's designated as a park, but there are no kidding between thirty-eight and forty parks here, a ton.
Yeah.
I'd love to see more parks where we're at right here, but these are things that we can, we can work on. But what I did through that Parker View process was I would take Ella to these parks with me, and I would just see, I'd see what she wanted to play on, see what she wanted. And there were some, a lot of these slides have been taken down, but there were some slides where I'm like, all right, I really need them.
You didn't have kids when you were living in Lake and Heath, but let me tell you, my boys were, by the time we moved back here, Weston was three and a half and Brayden was six, so they played on the European playground, so let me tell you.
Really?
I was like, woo!
I need to see this, okay.
Some of them were like heart attack worthy, you know? Even like, some of them, my oldest was like, I'm not climbing up that, that is, it's huge. So, I will say, I would say our, our playgrounds are pretty safe for us here compared to, to what we saw when we were traveling all over Europe and stuff when the boys were little, and now I'm like, man, there's safety rails everywhere now.
Yeah.
There are no safety rails over there, very few, dark between. So it was, it was heart attack worthy, but I'm sure your daughter enjoyed.
She did, she loved that.
She had the best gig ever, Dad.
She did, she loved that, and my daughter actually loved campaigning. I mean, she really, she like, she was hanging out cards, she loved helping me put up signs. After I won, she was.
Female leader.
Golly, she, yeah, I just loved having her involved, and I tried to involve, although the campaigning was super busy, but being able to involve my family in so many different things was just so important. I mean, yeah, that, that, that's one of the, I, I don't know that, if you haven't been, if you haven't been a military family, it's really hard sometimes to, to understand how often the military member may be gone and the types of things that they may miss. So, because having that frame of mind for me going into politics, I just, I try to involve them in everything, but in Wichita Falls, I can. So I can still have a full-time job, be at my kids' events, bring them around, do things in the evening, go eat, you know, we had, we had dinner at McBride's on Wednesday, and then we were going to get Cotton Patch to go last night, and Ella was like, we're going to sit there and we're going to have cotton. I'm like, we're going to sit here and we're going to have Cotton Patch. Cotton Patch, Cotton Patch is a hidden, is a hidden gem.
It is. Me and my boys go there.
So.
It's southern food.
So chicken fried, chicken fried chicken, jalapeno gravy.
I've never had the jalapeno gravy.
It's good. It's some of the best broccoli in town, phenomenal broccoli. You talk about how good the Brussels sprouts are, progress and green. But you have, you have the opportunity to just do so many things, and you can, you can go through programs like Leadership Wichita Falls, you can go through the Wichita Falls Citizens Academy, you can go through the Citizens Police Academy, you can start serving on local boards, you can serve on a nonprofit board, you can serve on a city board, but you're able to fit so much goodness into your life that has a positive impact across the community. And you, you know, I, I talked to my friends, he's like, I was like, what did you have time for today? He said, well, it was a fourteen-hour day, it was a two-hour drive, and this is Tampa.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's like, I, it was, you know, I left work, I left for work five minutes too late, which had thirty-five minutes to my commute, so it takes him forever to get to work. He's able to work a pretty long day, and then it takes him a long time to get home, and by the time he's done with a two-hour drive, he's like, I am just exhausted. So, you don't necessarily have time to enjoy your local jiu-jitsu, you know, go to a local restaurant, go to all of your kids' events, and just spend, spend more quality time with your family. You can do all these things in Wichita Falls, and here's, here's something that I will, that I will share with you, and I don't know if you've experienced this yet, but I hope you do, okay? So, like I mentioned, almost nineteen years, all my friends are at that, they're, they're right at that magic number, okay? Two, one of them just, just retired, just, well, he finished active duty last week, congrats, Wayne, if he watches this.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So, he's on it, he's doing his skill bridge now, so he can, we can do his ceremony in May. So, you know, a lot of these folks are like, I don't, you know, I'm trying to figure out where I want to live, but the number of people that call me and they're like, I want to move back to Wichita Falls. So, buddy in Arizona right now, I'm trying to, I'm like, look, downtown, we've got tons of awesome restaurants, great bars, some great places to get wine. I'd love to have an old-school gym downtown. So he is, I don't know, I'd love, I'd love to see that. I would like to see more, I'd like to see more clothing stores. I like, okay, I know, you're going to say a little, it's cool, it's cool. Maybe a place where you can buy boots or shoes.
Yeah.
Downtown, I'd love to see that.
So do you want more like local mom and pop shops?
I'd love to see those.
I would like to support more.
Yeah.
Small, local businesses. That's where I try to go to a lot. I really do. I love Duchess and Mimi downtown.
Oh, I have not been there, okay.
Okay, well, I know you guys can't see my house, but a lot of my decor is from them.
Okay.
I love them.
Duchess and Mimi, okay.
Yeah, they have the cute stuff. They, I know they have lots of like, social media pages too, if you want to follow them, but like, all my artwork and stuff, my big artwork, I have tall ceilings, and so I need massive, big pieces, and they're affordable, but they are super sleek and gorgeous.
Beautiful, yeah.
Well, this one was painted by one of my clients.
It is, it is beautiful, yeah.
That was an incredible gift I got.
Wow.
I have the best clients ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have really amazing, I'm grateful for them. So, you know, with your position that you've taken, and, you know, you're in our area where I live, which is awesome, so what would you say your top goals are? One, for the community as a whole, because we don't want to segregate it from the military, but, you know, where does your background in military and understanding the struggles of military families, you know, like you were just saying, you get to actually see your family and spend time with your family. My husband being, well, he's no longer active duty, but, you know, he missed a lot with my kids. And to say like, you know, hey, you get to come home and you get to be with your kids, and you get to be with your wife, and you get to have date night, and I can't tell you how many of those things, you know, I didn't get.
Sure.
And now we're trying to kind of play catch-up. But it is true, my husband, when he is home and flying with the reserves, he can work a full day. It's just fifteen minutes to Shepherd. He can do two flights, come home, and he actually can pick the kids up from school at three thirty, which is magical. And then, you know, he can actually be home for dinner, which is wild. And I know so many military families don't get that. Now, that doesn't happen all the time.
Yeah, true.
But it happens significantly more in the reserve squadron versus like, when he was active duty, and even when he was active duty here, before he transitioned into the reserves, he was home more than when we were at like, an ops duty station. Because when you're ops, you know, you're working those sixteen-hour shifts, twenty-four-hour shifts, or you're just simply gone all the time. You know, you're just T D Y or deployed, is what we dealt with a lot at our other bases. So, with your new position and kind of living that prior lifestyle and then seeing, honestly, like, the family unit that gets to be together, and it just strengthens, everything, it strengthens your marriage, and it's better for your kids. Your kids get to see mommy and daddy, you know, and your, your kids got to be a part of you running, like, they will forever remember that, they will forever remember that you let them put signs in the yard and, and shake people's hand and how hard their dad worked to get to the position. And for your daughter to see that, it's really cool, and for your wife to be able to support you and be a part of that, you know? I think that, so I'm a prior social worker, that's what my background is. That's, I have my B S W, and so many, I mean, it's a crazy world, it's two thousand twenty-four, we've got crazy things going on.
Sure.
The importance of a family unit, and I think something that's really big in like, I guess technically we're millennials, is we want to see that family-focused lifestyle versus let's work ourselves to death. And you're really describing right now, everything we've been talking about this whole time is, hey, I get to have self-care, I get to, you know, roll the mat in the morning, I get to go home and help my kids to school and kiss my wife goodbye, and she can go to work and I can go to work, but we're connecting again as a family unit, and we're eating dinner together, which is one of the most important things families can do. It changes everything in a child's life when they can eat dinner every night with their, their parents. It really does. It's life-altering for child development. And so this is something you probably weren't even noticing as you were sharing it with me, but the importance that you get to play as a father in your kid's life, but still, you know, live your best life, you know, you're having a career and you're having self-care and you get to be a dad. So would you say, looking at it from that perspective, like, wow, Wichita Falls gives you that opportunity?
It, it does, and, yeah, there, there are a bunch, I have a bunch of thoughts now. Yeah, some of which I previously hadn't, hadn't framed them like that, right? So, I am just tremendously grateful for all the opportunities that I have. And, yes, I have, yes, I've worked hard, but I've also, I've been fortunate that I've been surrounded by just wonderful mentors and exceptional friends for a number of years that have helped me, that have helped me succeed, right? Because there's no question that I could have done absolutely none of this by myself. Certainly could not have done any without my wife. But I mentioned earlier, in doing that community support role, that, that world, I could not do it for, in the long term, right? So seeing what social workers and what counselors, the types of things that they, that they, that they see, right? So, you know, I spend a lot of time talking about gratitude and positive things, but unfortunately, I mean, there's a lot of, we're just going to do with trauma, right? Like, you can get, like, yeah. So, you start talking about, I mean, you were talking about sitting down as a family. You know, I, I think about, so ACEs, so adverse childhood experiences, like, I was thinking about that as you were saying that, I'm like, gosh, I, but I, I've seen those, those checklists and the things that really impact the development of children. So, another thing that played into our decision to stay here is having those opportunities and not, not taking them for granted, because, yeah, I mean, tomorrow isn't promised, right? So you, yeah, so you just, you need to, you know, the, the opportunities that you do have to be able to put your kids to sleep, to kiss your wife in the morning before you're able to go to work. Not everyone gets that, so that's something that I, I constantly remind myself, that I have, that I, that I need to be grateful because it's not, it's not promised.
Yeah. Like you're talking about your buddy from Tampa and
Yeah.
he probably comes home and he is so exhausted and so checked out. He's probably just sitting there like, I will eat whatever is in front of my face and like trying to smile, like smile through it.
Yeah, yeah. Always deployed, always TDY. Uh, and something that, uh, I want the military members that come here to be able to take advantage of is that, you know, and it doesn't mean that it's any less critical or valuable, but it, it is a little bit of a slower pace in an education environment, uh, because the, the focus is educa- is educating your men, right? So because they might, you know, they might have more, more home time or they might have more time to focus on education, just finding a way to, okay, so you mentioned self-care. So I don't know, and my crew chief friends don't hate on, don't hate on me for this, but like, I don't know that that, that's a hard concept to explain to, you know, some military members that might be working fourteen to sixteen hours a day. They're like,
Oh, yeah.
They're like, what is self-care?
Yeah. No, they're surviving.
Right. It's survival versus thriving, right? So, uh, just educating individuals about how to take care of yourself, that it's okay to take care of yourself. Those are not, uh, that, you have to learn how to do those things. And I, I'm fortunate that, you know, you, you read it in books and research articles where you're like, this stuff's important, this stuff's important. Eventually you're like, wow, getting sleep and hydrating and to, and exercising. These things are all, uh, it's not just for, for fun. Like you, you have to do these things in order to take care of yourself, to be, to be present for your family. I mean, that's one thing that I'm, uh, I'm always, always, always trying to work on is because I'm involved in so many things and because I have so much passion for the things that I do. You know, in the back of my mind, I'm, I'm thinking about things sometimes, but I should be focusing on being in the moment and present with my kids. Uh, but you know, they, they, they do have a way of sometimes getting me like out of, out of my head and into the moment, which is so, so important. Uh, but yeah, yeah, there's a, there's, there's so much opportunity for just welcoming in military families, not just, not just the military member in uniform, but the individuals that are with them and kind of like this, uh, this invisible uniform that you don't see that they're also, cause they're also serving, right? I mean, if they're, if they're in it, they're in it. And they're, every two years, the military spouse is, or every two to four, they're, they're going with their spouse in the next duty session, station, and the, uh, the kids are coming too, right? And that's why. If you've been any military retirements in the past, probably five or six years, I don't know when they started doing it, when they started presenting kids with, oh, man. Woo! They start like reading the letter of like, you missed the birthdays and you're like, nope, can't do this. Like I can't, it, it's tough.
I couldn't sit through that. I could cry just thinking about that. I can't remember.
But it's, uh, you, we as a community can do a better job of, uh, helping military families understand that there are people, there are other people that are having similar challenges and they can help you navigate those. Uh, you talked about, I mean, the employment piece is huge, but the community piece is, is equally huge. It's all, it all, it all matters. Uh, but we just, we don't talk about this stuff enough, right? Because we're like, haha, everything is good. Everything's gonna be okay. I'm like,
We're really good at slapping on a fake smile and not asking for help. If there's anything that came from this video, and I haven't even said it yet, but reach out and, and ask someone, hey, how do I get that position that I didn't know it existed, that I could have had a higher pay? Hey, who do I even connect with to begin with? Um, when you move here, there's so many things you don't know. Um, you know, if you're an EFMP family, we're an EFMP family. My oldest son has autism. So I cannot even begin to tell you the ridiculous navigation that it was. I had to find seven new specialists, doctors, and they ended up ranging from Oklahoma City, Denton and Dallas in Wichita Falls. And then I ended up driving to Lawton for ABA therapy for the first year. It was insane. And I had no one. Um, and, uh, it was awful. That put a lot of strain on my family. Um, and if we could somehow feel, fill these gaps and voids, um, for needs for services and connecting spouses into the community, um, you know, I hope that we can create some type of, you know, program or like a go-to person or something that maybe is already happening. And maybe I just don't even know about it even still. But something where when families were coming in, you know, we could help. As a Realtor, you know, I'm trying my best to, um, I do help a lot of autism families that end up connecting with me through the autism community. Um, but right now I know, um, recently they haven't been accepting any more kiddos on the spectrum because there's, there's, um, a lack of services available because they're tapped out. Autism is continuing to increase. And so, um, you know, I know that that has a factor. I know last year I had four families who their orders ended up getting canceled. And thank goodness, we had been waiting to sign contracts. Cause I kept saying, hey, we need to make sure that this medical clearance goes through because I am very concerned that it might not. Cause at the time, my son was going to Odyssey, which is where Dr. Rachel is at. It's an ABA facility here. It's right outside base.
Yep.
Uh, they take Tricare. They also take Blue Cross Blue Shield. And, you know, she was like, Jen, I am maxed out. I am so maxed out. And there's also, um, Rose Street.
Rose Street, yeah.
And at the time I believe they were maxed out too. I haven't had any other autism families reach out to me in this past year. So I don't know if it's just no longer coming here, which would make sense. I mean, one autism is now much more known. There's a lot more diagnoses of it. Um, but yeah, I mean, resources like that, you know, what could we do, me as a Realtor, you in your position now, you know, how could we help fill that gap of connecting because it is high-stress time. You know, my spouse went straight into work, right? And then I'm over here trying to find specialists.
Yeah.
You know, um, I did have Nurse Parrish on base. I hope Nurse Parrish is still here.
I don't know.
She is amazing.
Yeah.
Um, she helped me navigate a lot, but that was a lot of burden on her shoulders as she was running a full facility too, you know? Like she can't just take Jen's phone calls all the time or all the other special needs families. Um, so maybe we could, we've got to do something to fill the gap.
So I, I would say that I'm fortunate in this position to be able to, to network with a lot of the leaders in, in these different entities throughout our community, right? So the first thing that came to mind is, so you mentioned EFMP, but EFMP is Exceptional Family Member Program, right? How many people in Wichita Falls, outside of the military environment, know what EFMP is?
They have no idea.
So because of that, I, I don't know the, and I'd love to know if it's even public, uh, or if I, I may not be able to access it, but the number of families that, that are labeled as EFMP when they, when they, when they come here. And then how, how do we support an EFMP family through, uh, the healthcare perspective, through the school district? But there's so many, there's so many layers to it. But how do you, how do you do all that to where Wichita Falls becomes, or Shepherd Air Force Base specifically, becomes, you know, a place where you feel, you're like, gosh, we're gonna, we're gonna be okay.
Yeah.
That's a, uh, that's a bit of an aspirational goal, but I don't think it's unrealistic. I think through communicating with all these different entities maybe. Uh, and I will be, uh, the advocate and the networker that will say, hey, have you considered this perspective? Because some of the things that you and I have talked about, military families are gonna know what we're talking about. Individuals that don't necessarily have the experience are gonna be like, I don't, they don't have the context, right? And, and, and if they knew, they would love to help.
Yeah.
But they don't know what they don't know.
Yeah.
So it's, it's almost like a no, 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 no. So it, it's the, it's the education. It's the, you know, it's, it's me in this position, just educating my, my teammates on council and the mayor are just saying, hey, these are some considerations. We're making decisions about this. Uh, even just saying like, hey, EFMP means this.
Yeah.
Yeah. EFMP means this. Uh, that's, and that's, you know, if you're, if you're talking, we'll go with like one in five. I don't know that's the number, but like if it is, you're able to deepen that connection with a, with a military family immediately. And then you find out, gosh, well, we, this, we can welcome this family into our community with open arms. Okay. So they're here for three or four years. Guess what? They're gonna retire. Where do you want to go? Do you want to go to the community that was like, no? Or you want to go to the community that was like, hey, we took care of you. We took care of your kids. We took care of your spouse while you were here. That, that was home. So.
That's what, and that's what I would love to do is there are so many people who come here, like you said, hey, this is a teaching base. That's why we came here. We left the active duty because we needed my husband to be home and to, you know, be more present. And the teaching environment at Shepherd gives us that opportunity that we did not have in the ops world. Um, and we were definitely at a stage in our life with our kids that like, I had to have the support. I was struggling. Um, I mean, he was gone ridiculous amounts. You probably know, you were on the same aircraft, so you understand how many deployments you guys like to go on and how many TDYS you guys like to go on. I don't think you like going on them, but you know, they were mandatory to protect our country. So it was what it was, you know? Um, so I think that would be great. I would love, um, and I know there's other, you know, military families going through similar things. I think who would love to see that connection into the community. Um, of, hey, I've got a kiddo who's got a little bit of extra needs and where can they go to school? How do we do? We had an IEP, yet then we had an ARD. And I was like, an ARD? What is that? You know, I had to learn what an ARD was and do we go to public school, private school? What are our options? Um, kind of having like a liaison to kind of help with that would be awesome. Um, I mean, that would be a heck of a liaison job. I don't even, they would, they would have to know probably way too much. Um, and have too many, too many different hats on, you know, but, um, I think that would be something that military families would benefit from. Kind of talking it out. I don't know if that's an, an option.
Oh, I, I, I don't know. Uh, but
I don't know. I just planned that out while we were talking. I was like, this is a need.
We go to the chamber, talk to Casey and ask, uh, I don't know, uh, what the, what the future could look like. Cause there's a, even from that perspective, I mean, there's more. There's certainly more opportunities for employment, but it's,
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of like that, that one-stop shop that you mentioned. Yeah.
Yeah. To kind of have that one place we get to go to. Okay. Like what do we do for medical? What do we do for careers?
Yeah.
You know, where do we live? So as agents, we cannot say, hey, you should really live in this neighborhood and this neighborhood and this neighborhood. Because for us, it goes against our license. It's called steering.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I just have to be like, I happen to love the stadium area because that's where I chose to live.
Yeah.
Um, we also have lived over by Market Street. That also went well, you know? Um, I happen to help a lot of other people move like country club area. So I'm able to talk about like, hey, we've got Lake Wellington. My kiddo's at a sleepover in Lake Wellington right now.
Yeah.
You know, we've got friends who live in that community. Um, so, and then also even just the outskirts of town, you know, people who want to move to even a little bit tinier place. You know, you've got Iowa Park, Burke Burnett, Holiday. Um, I've even moved a family all the way out to Bowie. Um, they bought almost eighty acres and they're building their dream barn. Oh, yeah. And I've got another sweet military family. They're actually retiring. Um, and we're looking for, you know, they want to finish their life out on a farm. Um, and so they're like, hey, we're up to an hour away, you know, like what can we find? Um, and that's a possibility here. They liked Wichita Falls, but they're still open. They want to have like a bunch of land. Um, so they liked Wichita Falls enough to be like, hey, we want to call this home, like you did. So if we could continue to create that welcoming environment for military families, we would have a lot more retention and it would help, I think, the city overall. And then I could get a Costco and movie lemon.
I mean, hey, it's worth, it's worth trying. Talked about Bee Hags, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's, yeah, but we could
Bring Boeing.
Bring Boeing, bring Lockheed. But that sign in the, when you enter Wichita Falls, it says home of Shepherd Air Force Base.
They did just recently have that.
They did. They did. Yeah. So that was, that was a big initiative. That was awesome. So, but home of Shepherd Air Force Base and military family family. We do it.
Yeah. I would, I would love that.
Yeah.
I think this is great. I think this is the longest, uh, longest YouTube channel ever.
I don't know. I mean, did we hit an hour or we might hit an hour?
We might, we might have. You did good. We need to eat. I'm gonna take my son on a sushi date. I know you said you were gonna go get a burger.
I will probably, yeah, I'll probably do Brahms because Ella wants Brahms.
Yeah. That's what Weston requested sushi. So we're gonna hit up, uh, Sakura.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah. That's who we like to, he went, he likes to watch the, uh, he calls it the fancy people making the fancy rolls. He just eats the California roll. He doesn't know what's up.
There's so many options. They're delicious.
And he's gonna have some dumplings.
There you go. You gotta get dumplings. Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you, Mike.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. So if you didn't know, he is our new city council for District Four and we're super excited because we've got some military representation. And so that's why I wanted him to come on. So thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.